Ladies and gentlemen, I call this meeting of the city council to order. Please note that pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 orders suspended certain provisions of the open meeting law and Governor Baker's March 15, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place, as well as Mayor Curtis Tony's declaration of emergency on March 15, 2020, this meeting of the city council will be conducted via remote participation. We will post an audio recording, audio video recording, transcript or other comprehensive record of these proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting of the city, on the city of Somerville website and local cable access government channels. Now please rise for prayer and pledge of allegiance.
Mr. President, let's begin this meeting with a prayer. God grant this city council the serenity to accept the things that cannot be changed, the courage to change the things that can be changed, and the wisdom to know the difference. And now let's join in a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
This is roll call. Counselor Klingon.
Present.
Counselor Mbah.
Present.
Counselor White.
Here.
Counselor Ballantyne.
Here.
Counselor Strezzo.
Present.
Counselor Niedergang.
Here.
Counselor Davis.
Here.
Counselor Scott.
Present.
Counselor Ewan Campen.
Here.
Counselor Rosetti.
Present.
And Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yeah.
Mr. President, all 11 counselors are present. We have a quorum.
Do we have any moments of silence? Counselor Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to have a moment of silence for Mr. Kenneth Thomas. Mr. Thomas was a resident of Somerville Lab right across from Market Basket. A fixture in the neighborhood. For as long as I've known, he didn't necessarily suffer fools lately, but was incredibly thoughtful and well-read and had neighbors that looked out for him. He, longtime resident of Somerville, had a long and tough path through life, but he's missed in the neighborhood and passed away of a heart attack a couple of months ago. Thank you.
Counselor Ewan Campen.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to add, to sign on to this and to mention Mr. Powers's son, sorry, Mr. Thomas's son, his son's partner wrote a very powerful article about Mr. Thomas, which is actually how I and I think a number of people learned of his passing. And I just wanted to recommend that people take a look. It's called "They Marched For Him Too," and it was published in the Somerville Times by a woman named Anna J. James. And for those who want to know more about Kenneth's background, I would highly recommend looking at that article.
Are there any further moments of silence? Here and none, please rise for a moment of silence. Next item.
Item three, Mr. President, is the approval of the minutes of the special meeting on June 19th and the regular meeting on June 25th, 2020.
Seeing no discussion, this item will be laid on the table for approval. Next item.
Item number four is a public hearing on a grant of location application submitted by TC Systems, which seeks to install 490 feet of conduit from an existing Metro Media manhole in New Washington Street to a proposed manhole in Interbelt Road and then branch off of that manhole 97 feet to a proposed handhold in the Interbelt Road sidewalk and then another 15 feet to an existing cable TV manhole in Interbelt Road. This is to bring additional service to the area.
I now declare this public hearing open. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on this item? You can please use the hand emoji item and I will call upon you. And I see Mr. Adam Heller. Adam, you have the floor.
This is Adam Heller from CNA Engineering Group representing TC Systems to speak on behalf of this. As was just explained, this is a proposal for an installation of some new conduit on Interbelt Road between two existing media manholes where we have existing facilities. This will help us expand our network and service customers in the area, and I would be happy to take any questions about our proposal.
Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak on this item? Please use the hand icon. Seeing no further comment, I declare this public hearing closed. Do any counselors have any comment? Here and no comment. This isn't my ward. Normally, we would keep the public hearing open until the next meeting, but this is a non-residential neighborhood, so I'm not concerned about this project. So I would recommend approval. So any discussion? Here and none, this item is laid on the table for approval. Next item.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item five has been withdrawn. Item six is a communication submitted by Counselor Strezzo reporting on the number of rape kits administered in the past five years and how many of them were included as evidence in cases that went to court.
Counselor Strezzo.
Thank you, Mr. President. So a couple of weeks ago, I put an information request to see how many rape kits were processed in the SPD in the past five years, and I wanted the information to be put into public record. And I want to thank the SPD Police Department for getting the information as quickly and being thorough in the process. Is there an echo?
Yeah, everybody has their microphone on, please mute it.
Thank you, Mr. President. So rape kits are physically gathered evidence, including DNA taken after sexual assault. And checking in the process of rape kits are important because rape kits are often the only physical evidence in court. But many municipalities, and there's been some media coverage on this, so nationally there's been discoveries that some municipalities, some cities and towns don't process the rape kits. They just sit on a shelf essentially forever and are never processed. And with that, they can be left there for decades. They sit on shelves, they can't be used as evidence, and we know that there's thousands of rape kits across the nation, and nobody's convicted. And there's an issue of serial rapists because a large portion of what they're finding once these tests are being, these rape kits are being found, is there's a lot of serial rapists out there that aren't really discovered until this is put into, until the kits are processed. So there's a huge backlog across the nation, and that's not only an injustice to rape victims, but it's a disservice to the community. And studies have shown that rapists are going to typically rape again. And when, and I want to bring into the conversation that when three major cities recently tested their backlog rape kits, Memphis, Detroit, and Cleveland, trying to end the backlog, which is a nonprofit project, it resulted in the identification of more than 1,320 suspected serial rapists, and that's just in three cities. So that really goes with how important this issue is. And according to the, to studies, offenders that commit sexual violence are often involved in other crimes such as burglary, domestic violence, and homicide. So this is very much a public safety issue, and one of the reasons why I have chosen to find out where we are with this. So with Somerville, the reports I received is that for the past five years, we've, since 2015, we've had 54 rape kits turned into as evidence. And a breakdown in years, 2015, there were seven, 2016, there was 21 rape kits, 2017, there were six, 2018, there were 10, 2019, there were four, and in 2020, so far, here we are in August, we've had six. So I asked the police department how many of these kits were used as evidence in trials. This information, I believe, is held in the DA's office, which is why, Mr. President, I'm asking if we can take number 40, resolution number 40, out of order to discuss. And I am asking that this information be included for public record. Mr. President.
Okay, so this item will be placed on file and laid on the table. Counselor Strezzo requests to take item number 40 out of order. Any discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please read item number 40.
Mr. President, item number 40 is a resolution submitted by Counselor Strezzo that the Middlesex County District Attorney provide this council with the number of rape kits tested and the number used as evidence in Somerville court cases over the last five years and explain how they're handled once they're received by the district attorney's office.
Counselor Strezzo.
Thank you, Mr. President. So essentially, the next step, once, and information regarding the rape kits has to go to the DA, so I am politely asking the DA to, the district attorney, to give us some information on their process, and hopefully we'll get some information. And thank you very much for letting me talk about this today.
On the item, Counselor Klingon.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you, I'd like to sign on to this order. I also like to thank Counselor Strezzo for bringing this forward. I've, you know, I've studied a lot of the crime stats, just not in Somerville per se, but just in general, I've heard of this being an issue nationwide with the rape kits. And, you know, oftentimes when they're not working on a case, they don't, they don't end up bothering to test them, and then you do have, you do find situations where someone could have been caught and it turned out to be a serial rapist. So I think if, you know, we're going to put women through the agony of doing, dealing with a rape kit, I think that we should be trying to get those kits tested, the DA's office and the SPD should be handling those kits henceforth. So I do appreciate, I also think it speaks to the numbers, you know, I think it would give a lot of us in the community the sense of just what the numbers are out there in terms of this crime. Thank you.
Counselor Ballantyne would like to sign on to both items, and Counselor Scott, do you have a comment?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I would also like to sign on to both items, and I thank Counselor for getting this into the conversation and express my appreciation for doing the legwork. Getting this kind of information is extremely difficult, and I really appreciate the diligence being shown here. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Counselor White would like to sign on. Here and no further discussion, this item will be laid on the table for approval with a copy sent to the district attorney's office. Next item.
Returning to the regular order of business, we move to item number seven, which is a communication by Counselor Strezzo reporting in the Affordable Housing Trust Fund meeting of August 13th.
Counselor Strezzo.
Mr. President, I ask that we can put this on the table till next meeting.
Okay, this item is laid on the table with no vote taken. Next item.
Item eight is a resolution submitted by Counselor Niedergang that the administration update this council on any discussions regarding a regional E-911 call center and how such a center would impact the reimagining of how emergency dispatch is done in Somerville.
Counselor Niedergang.
Mr. President, I'm waiting for my camera to come on, but it doesn't seem to be coming, so I'll just speak. Thank you, Mr. President. A few years ago, the administration discussed with the council, I think it was the Board of Alderman at the time, that there were serious discussions going on with neighboring communities about having a regional 911 call center. And I'm not sure what happened with those discussions, and I wanted to get an update and also hear how this might affect the discussions that we've started here in the city around various proposals that have been made, some of them very, very thoughtful and well thought through to change the way that, you know, police dispatching is done. So I'd like this to go to whichever committee all the police items are in. Is it Public Health and Public Safety?
We have been, however, there are 911-related items in Housing and Community Development. Maybe we could keep them all in there.
Yeah, that's fine. Wherever, wherever they would go with similar items, that would be great. Thank you.
Okay, so I think I'll lay on the table for approval and refer to Housing and Community Development. Counselor Ballantyne would like to sign on, and Counselor Klingon would like to make comments.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you, I would also like to sign on to this order. That's resolution number eight. I thank my good colleague for bringing this up. You know, I don't know how exactly the technology works, but I know that when we were, when we were doing a lot of talk in the last, last session, when I was the Chair of Public Health and Public Safety, as far as the 911 calls were routed, at this point in time, it was pretty encouraging that, I think it was like something like 96 or like 90-something percent of 911 calls actually reach Somerville 911, like they no longer routed out to the state police. So that kind of gives me hope in that, you know, with the cell technology, if we did have an alternate number, like, you know, not a 311 obviously, but like a 711 or something, you know, I do think that certainly the technology is such that we could come up with our own system and make sure those calls are routed appropriately. So I just wanted to add that little piece and sign off next.
All right, any further comment? Here and none, this item laid on the table for approval, referred to Housing and Community Development. Next item.
Item number nine is a resolution submitted by Counselor Niedergang that the administration inform this council about any proposals to integrate police and fire emergency dispatch operations, and if there are no proposals, share its position on a centralized emergency dispatch system.
Counselor Niedergang.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think this is self-explanatory, and I would like this to also go to Housing and Community Development, please.
Any further discussion? Counselor Davis would like to sign on. Here and no further discussion, this item is laid on the table for approval and referred to Housing and Community Development. Next item. Counselor Ballantyne would like to sign on.
Item number 10 is an order submitted by Counselor White that the Superintendent in Special Services, the City Treasurer, and the City Solicitor appear before this council or an appropriate committee to discuss the implementation of ordinance 8.3 as the denial of building permits to those who have failed to pay city-imposed fines.
Counselor Davis would like to sign on, and Counselor White, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. This ordinance actually has been on the books for a long time, and a question has arisen, one, how frequently it's being implemented, but also whether it's being used in coordination with inspectional services to deal with what you may want to consider problem landlords, because it has a major effect, and that's why I want the city solicitor to appear, because if you have someone who owns one piece of property and say needs a permit to do something to it, then it could be denied under this. But I don't know if people have thought through the fact that if you have, say, a real problem landlord who has not kept up with his property and been fined, and then is seeking a building permit to build a whole new building, it's my understanding that this could be used to also prevent the issuance of a building permit for that. Because my concern is we have to strengthen the tools that we have to try to ensure that the results of our inspections are implemented as opposed, you know, as against those problem landlords. So this would be one tool, because it affects them in the pocketbook. And then the second one, I might as well speak on it now, is I believe Alderman Davis is going to discharge it from committee, which would allow also unpaid building fines, health fines, et cetera, to be levied against the real estate where the offense took place. So this would be another tool, because it hits folks, you know, on their property record, on the lien, and if they ever try to sell it, then the lien would have to be paid off. So this sort of puts the city, I think, more on the driver's seat in dealing with some of these problem property owners, because otherwise, if you have to take it to the district court to try to, you know, enforce the payment of the tickets and fines, many times the district court judges don't look at this as a really, you know, high-level problem, and many times they are reluctant to, you know, basically approve large-size fines. So, you know, it's my hope that, again, this passes along with the item from Counselor Davis in Legislative Matters, and we can move forward with it. And I think it's good, as quickly as possible, to have the Superintendent of Inspection Services, the Treasurer, and the Solicitor appear before the appropriate committee so we can get moving on it. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, the entire council would like to sign on to this. Counselor Davis, I see your face, but Counselor Niedergang flagged them first. Is this on a specific comment?
I was going to suggest that we take up item number 41 out of order.
Okay, well, we'll have Counselor Niedergang speak on this item first, and then we'll bring up the next item.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to say that, to thank Counselor White for bringing this item. Both of these items are tremendously, these are like gifts from heaven. I can't believe that we might have these powers to lien developers and collect fines and to stop developers who are abusing the residents by, you know, consistently breaking the law to stop them from getting additional permits. I mean, this is, this is just a gift from heaven, and I am so grateful to Counselor White for bringing these two items. And I, you know, these are, these are top priorities as far as I am concerned in order to protect neighbors from rapacious developers. So these are fantastic tools. I really hope that both of them can be implemented, you know, very robustly by the city. Thank you.
All right, Counselor Davis, you had an item you want to take out of order?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to take item 41 out of order, please.
Counselor Davis moves to take item number 41 out of order. Seeing no discussion, Mr. Clerk, please read item number 41.
Item number 41 is an order submitted by Counselor Davis that item number 210331 be discharged from the Committee on Legislative Matters for action by this council.
Counselor Davis.
Thank you, Mr. President. So first, from a procedure standpoint, pretty self-explanatory, I'd like to discharge this item for purposes of the council considering it. I've been advised by the Solicitor's Office that there's no further language or action that the council would have to take other than simply approving this for this distinct effect. So I wanted, rather than have it go, you know, be on a committee agenda and then come back in two weeks, I thought, let's just have the conversation quickly now. And, you know, if folks do want it to keep it committee and have a more detailed conversation, I'm happy to do that, but let's have a short discussion now and hopefully, my intent is to recommend approval, move for approval. But first, we would have to discharge it, so I think we need to vote on that.
All right, so roll call vote to discharge the item. Mr. Clerk, is any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
There's a roll call vote on discharging item number 210331. On that item, Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Ballantyne.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Niedergang.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campen.
Yes.
Counselor Rosetti.
Yes.
And Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. President, all 11 counselors have voted in favor of discharging this item. It is now before the entire council, and if it's the board's pleasure, this item could be approved in a roll call with the other items that have been, you know, that are accumulating.
All right, council on the item.
Thank you. So Counselor White discussed this briefly, and also when he first introduced it, I am in full agreement. It had been my intent to put this on an agenda for the Committee of Legislative Matters on September 3rd, and when I inquired to the Solicitor's Office, what would be, and just, you know, asked for whatever language we would need, they said, you don't need anything. Really, all you got to do is just vote yes on it if that's the wish, the will of the council, and it'll take effect. So that's why I brought it back up. I am in full support of this. As Counselor Niedergang noted, there's, you know, there's a great need for us to, you know, increase the leverage we have. And I know some, I see some others want to speak in it, so I'll just make one brief point on it. You know, in my opinion, as the former chair of the Land use Committee, who spent years, literally, working to get the new zoning passed, you know, I view the current situation or at least too many, too many circumstances under the current situation as really undercutting the power of this new zoning that we all worked so hard for, that the administration has, you know, has really held up as a great accomplishment over the last few years. One of the most significant aspects of that was putting statutory requirements for community meetings, for neighborhood meetings. And if, if people, if developers aren't held to what they agree following those community meetings, then the whole, a significant part of that, that lauded zoning is utterly pointless. There needs to be a back end and enforcement end to this process, and without it, you know, we're just wasting our time. And fortunately, there's been more than one example of folks feeling that way recently. So this is one tool that can be used, I fully support it, and I will move for approval. I'd like to, for the purpose of discussion, I'd like to move that the, that this item is approved this evening.
Counselor Davis moves for approval on the item. Counselor Rosetti.
Mr. President, thank you. Through you to my colleague Davis and White, thank you both. And to the community, I want to apologize to the community, since I became an Alderman, then now counselor, the most time I've ever spent on any item is about community development and the angst that neighbors are experiencing with disobedient developers, and this has been going on for years. So I apologize to my constituents that we didn't, I didn't think of this and move this earlier. I also am perplexed why the administration never brought this to my attention, because Lord knows I've driven inspectional services and the mayor's office and planning and zoning crazy over these years. But what can we do? What else can we do? So I applaud Counselor White and Counselor Davis for bringing this to us, and I wholeheartedly move to support it immediately.
Any further discussion? Here and none, I'd like to comment on this. Thank you, Counselor Davis and White for bringing this to our attention. I have to express my frustration very quickly, though, on this, because contrary to what Counselor Niedergang said, this is not a gift from God at all. This is a law that has not been enforced. And it's just, I've been told explicitly by city officials that something like this, holding past issues with a developer against them when it comes to getting permits, was not possible. And to find that there's actually an ordinance that says this and that we have rules, it's just yet another example of many rules that are not being enforced. So I am grateful to my colleagues for bringing this to my attention, but I am not grateful to God for bringing this up, because man is not enforcing it. So any further discussion here? Here and none, and also the previous item is laid on the table for approval and referred to Housing and Community Development. And let's do a roll call vote for all items that are before us.
Very good. Mr. President, this will be a roll call vote on the approval of item numbers 3, 4, 8, 9, 10, 40, and the late item number 210331, and also placing item 6 on file. So on that motion, Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Ballantyne.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Niedergang.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campen.
Yes.
Counselor Rosetti.
Yes.
And Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. President, all Mr. President, all councillors have voted in favor of the approval of that motion. It has been approved.
All right, next item.
Next item, Mr. President, is item number eleven, which is an ordinance submitted by Councilor Ewan Campen proposing zoning map changes to eight properties on McGrath Highway between three-sixty-eight and four-fourteen McGrath Highway as detailed with him.
Counselor Ewan Campen.
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask that these be sent to Land Use with a copy to Planning Board and I just wanted to, um, inform all of my colleagues that these will be on a agenda, an agenda for a joint public hearing on September fifteenth, which is a Tuesday alongside all of the other pending, um, map change amendments, which includes a, um, petition from residents of Gilman Square and includes, um, a property on Murdoch Street. Um, and there may be one or two that I'm overlooking, um, but that date again is September fifteenth. So if this, um, if there are constituents who would be interested in that, please sure, make sure that they know.
All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, this item will be, uh, referred to Land Use Committee with a copy to the Planning Board.
Item number twelve is an order submitted by Councilor Ewan Campen that the Director of SBCD report to this council the status and timeline to opening of the three cannabis dispensaries that have received licenses and the status of subsequent rounds of applicants to the Marijuana Advisory Committee.
Counselor Ewan Campen.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I've heard from many residents who have been waiting for years now for there to be adult-use recreational cannabis dispensaries in Somerville. And, you know, these are folks who, who don't understand what is taking so long. Um, of course, as a ward councillor, I'm aware of specific issues, um, you know, hiccups that have arisen in, um, the, the three specific licenses, uh, that were approved in the City of Somerville. Um, the reason that I submitted this order is because at this point, it's been almost a year since the Marijuana Advisory Committee, the MAC, made their first round of recommendations. Um, those were the first three dispensaries. And in the meantime, the, the city council, members of the public have made a number of requests around adding additional voices to the advisory committee, um, representing diversity, racial justice advocates, local businesses, um, as well as, um, uh, kind of just basic transparency into that process. So I'm looking for an update on where we are. Um, I, I assume that other applications have come in and are being considered. Um, and I am looking for some transparency on where we are in that process. And so I'm hoping that this can go to committee for further discussion with the administration and with the public.
Any preference on committee?
Um, unless you have a better idea, perhaps, housing and community development?
Sounds like that committee's getting a lot of work, so sure. Um, let's see, real quick, uh, Counselor Ballantyne, Klingon, Scott, and Ba would like to sign on. Counselor Scott would like to comment. And Mr. Clerk, could you just make sure that item number ten is referred to housing and community development as well?
Surely will, Mr. President.
All right, Counselor Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, my colleague from Ward Three. This is also something that I get a lot of questions about and it has been a point of pride that Somerville acted swiftly and with incredible breadth, uh, of thought in terms of increasing equity in the process. Since we acted, uh, I guess the lack of action for, uh, it has been stunning and, uh, other municipalities are proceeding past Somerville. Somerville, I think, can no longer be said to be leading the way, uh, in terms of opening these recreational shops and doing so in equitable manner. So, uh, I think it's past time for some increased focus on this and transparency and I wholeheartedly applaud this effort. Uh, would love to see this on an HCD agenda as soon as possible and, uh, will be making time to attend. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, this item will be laid on the table and referred to housing and community development. Next item.
Item thirteen is communications submitted by Councilor Ewan Campen and Counselor Klingon updating this council on community working group discussions on reimagining Somerville's response to nonviolent emergencies.
Counselor Ewan Campen.
Thank you, Mr. President. So during this year's budget process, uh, we made a commitment to at least three major initiatives around racial justice broadly and around policing specifically. Um, the first is that the mayor's office is going to hire a Director of Racial and Social Justice, um, to bring a kind of dedicated racial justice lens to everything the city does and also to coordinate a number of specific programs. The, the second initiative, um, is a city council-led process looking at civilian oversight. Um, and that is something that, uh, I know many councillors have been working on and I believe that, um, uh, my good colleague from Ward Two will be giving an update on that, um, later tonight. The third commitment that we made is regarding what is called reimagining police in Somerville. And what this really comes down to is thinking about alternative responses for nonviolent emergencies, things like medical emergencies, addiction-related emergencies, homelessness, mental health issues, and asking ourselves, is sending armed police officers really the appropriate response, um, that, that we want going forward? Um, so at the time that we were doing the budget, the administration gave us a memo that has a proposed timeline and that includes a six-month community process on this initiative starting in October. Um, and I can say that in the weeks over, over the summer, basically since we had that discussion, I got an enormous amount of interest from members of the public who wanted to start talking about this. Um, I heard from, uh, many diverse Somerville residents, including people with a lot of experience in emergency service providing, uh, criminal justice, um, civil rights, social workers, activists, all of whom are really excited and passionate to get to work on this. And so we've started having sort of, um, informal, we've had two meetings at this point. And I want to be really clear, this is by no means a group that has any kind of monopoly on this process. This is just people who kind of organically reached out and wanted to get started talking about this. And so I, I just wanted to, to be really transparent about this because it's work that I'm excited about and I know others on the council are. Um, to date, we've met twice. Um, I found these meetings incredibly inspiring and I'm really, uh, excited to get to work in this in October. We've been looking at the city's existing emergency response protocol, with how our nine-one-one system currently works. And, um, I've requested that the administration submit, it's on tonight's agenda, um, uh, the, it's agenda item number thirty-two is the existing police policy around how nine-one-one calls are dealt within the city. So I'd encourage anyone who's interested in this process to like, take a look at that. Um, it's, it's linked to tonight's agenda. Um, and of course, we've also been brainstorming ways, once we start a formal community process in earnest, how we can make sure that that community outreach process, um, reaches people who are gonna be most directly affected by this, um, who have the biggest stake in this and who may or may not kind of, uh, organically show up at, you know, city council meetings. Um, so given the enormous amount of interest that I've seen on this particular topic, I wanted to just give an update to my colleagues, to the administration and to the public to say that if this group is any indication, I think there is great interest in doing this work, reimagining what our first response looks like. And I also want this to serve as an open invitation to anyone in the public who is passionate about this and wants to be involved. Please reach out directly to your city councillor. Um, and of course, you know, keep an eye out for once this process does, uh, get going, probably in October, but I think it's important that we also start to do the work before that, um, to identify, you know, folks who are particularly passionate about this and want to be involved. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Any further discussion? Counselor Scott.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank my colleague from Ward Three, uh, for doing this. And I've also had a lot of interest, uh, down here in Ward Two through my weekly office hours and through emails I've received. Uh, I was grateful to be invited and I got to sit in on one of these meetings. Uh, and I just am also incredibly inspired, uh, by the talent and skillset that people have brought me to this and the level of energy, I think, gives me a lot of hope for where the city can go in the next year. Thank you, sir.
In no further discussion, this item is laid on the table and placed on file. Next item.
Item number fourteen is an order submitted by Counselor Mbah that the Commissioner of Public Works repair the broken street light on Woods Ave.
Counselor Ba.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. And I want to honor this, honestly say that I didn't know that I will put in a board order for this item. As I usually call the various departments to fix the problem. And through the process, I build a relationship, you know, with these folks. But this light has been broken for more than a month. And when I first noticed it, I communicated the problem to DPW. And it's been more than a month, you know, it's still not fixed. So I'm officially, you know, like submitting it as a board order so that my neighbors can know that, you know, I've done my job by bringing the problem to the administration. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, Counselor Ba, uh, Counselor, uh, Ballantyne would like to sign on and Counselor, uh, Ewan Campen, you have a comment?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Um, I, I just wanted to say there is a traffic light, um, outside Prospect Hill Park that the neighbors want turned off. So perhaps DPW can switch them. Um, it's extremely bright, uh, and it goes in a bunch of the neighbors', uh, windows. So, just do a, a one-for-one.
There we go. Any further discussion? I've just had, uh, Counselor Ba, you should, uh, definitely not feel, uh, like you can't submit a, um, constituent issue to the city council. I did it a lot more before, uh, but it's still something worth doing and DPW does tend to respond to these as well. So that's not an issue. Uh, so this item is laid on the table for approval with a copy sent to DPW.
Very good. Item number fifteen is an order submitted by Counselor Klingon that the Chief of Police provide to this council the number of confirmed shootings since January two thousand eighteen, including the dates, the times, the locations, the number of rounds fired, and what or who those rounds hit.
Counselor Klingon.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm, if, I don't know if the clerk want, if we could just read the, the next two, they're all pretty much, um, the same. We can waive the readings of the next two. Um, uh, whichever, what do you, what do you recommend?
Counselor Klingon moves to waive the readings of the next two items. Um, hearing no discussion. These items are waived.
Sure. So, so, um, all three of these items are obviously around, um, shootings, uh, not just in my ward, uh, citywide, but it does happen that, um, there's been a number of, a rash of shootings, uh, just this past summer. It's been a really, really, uh, bad summer. Um, and, you know, we've had a number of people shot and wounded. Uh, we've had, um, a community terrified by some sort of gang dispute. Um, and the main thing is, is that, you know, I, you know, I applaud our media for trying to cover everything they can, our local media here, but I understand, you know, like the stay-in-time, uh, print media, local media is, it's spread really thin. But, um, the, the purpose of, of these orders really is to, um, so that the people that have been coming to me, my, my constituents and the people that have been reaching out to me, feel seen and feel heard. Um, I think that they, you know, they, they think that, uh, nobody cares and nobody's paying attention. Um, I know that the, the larger shooting was, was on, on the, the local news and so on, but, um, you know, it just, it gets really frustrating to folks, uh, that think, you know, they should also, they feel that the public should know that there, you know, we do have a, a safety issue like any inner city, um, that we, we should not ignore that, uh, that problem, uh, it's not gonna go away on its own. So I think it's something that people want to know about, they want to talk about. Um, so I'm just bringing those voices here and, um, you know, I myself, obviously, we, you know, we all live in the city. Um, it's, it's been really scary. Uh, you know, we're talking lots of rounds, like movie-type stuff, like someone unloaded a twelve rounds into a, into a, a woman's car who was parking. Um, you know, that's not, that's not just like, there's no fear. It's not just like a couple of shots and, and then driving off. So, um, I think it's, uh, extremely important for people to be aware of what's going on in the community and, and, um, uh, so that's what, that's what these orders, uh, hopefully I will cover. I'd like to, um, not only have this information in writing, but I was hoping that, uh, you know, it could be, we could be briefed on it, uh, at, you know, at a meeting, public health, public safety meeting. So I'd like to refer, uh, those to the Public Health, Public Safety Committee.
All right, Counselor Scott and, um, what Davis would like to sign on to the three items, as well as Counselor Ba and Counselor Ballantyne, uh, you had a comment?
Uh, yes. So, uh, I thank my colleague for bringing these up. I just would like to mention on item seventeen in July, I also put a similar order in that asked that, uh, the, uh, Police Department use social media to include, um, uh, the, identify, you know, uh, and keep, uh, residents updated on, on the crime log, uh, in the city of Somerville. Uh, it's not transparent. And, uh, we put everything on social media. We should just make sure that the, the crime is on, uh, the crime log is also reflected on social media. So, um, I think that having a second order in two months just highlights the, the fact to the administration how important this is and that certainly the constituents who live in Ward Four should not feel that they are invisible and that the, um, uh, the seriousness of these crimes that, uh, occur there and have also occurred in Ward Seven are, um, not swept under the rug so that, uh, everybody is aware of it. Thank you.
Counselor Strezzo would like to sign on to the three items as well. Counselor Davis, did you have a comment?
I know, Mr. President, I was just gonna, uh, say send it to public health, public safety, sounds, uh, sounds good by me.
Very good.
Mr. President?
Counselor Klingon.
Could I just speak one more, one time on this? Um, so just to be specific, the ShotSpotter order is really to juxtapose the confirmed shootings because I think sometimes, um, folks think that they hear gunshots, it could be fireworks, but I know that there's been, uh, you know, uh, I think people are gonna be surprised at how many, uh, shootings have occurred in, in just the last few months. Um, and then the, the, the social media is, yeah, is described, uh, by, by Counselor Ballantyne that, um, you know, Boston, Boston does it. They have a great communications department where they're just pumping us out, letting people know what's happening. Um, and I think it's, it's important to our residents, so, so thanks for your support, everybody. Cheers.
All right, hearing no further discussion, these three items will be laid on the table for approval and referred to public health and safety.
Item number eighteen is an order submitted by Counselor Klingon that the Director of SBCD deploy traffic calming measures to reduce speeding vehicles on Heath Street from Moreland to Temple Streets, on Sycamore Street from Medford Street to Broadway, and on Shore Drive from Route sixteen to Route thirty-eight.
Counselor Klingon.
Uh, no, Mr. President, I have nothing on this. It's pretty self-explanatory. I look forward to working with mobility.
Hearing no further discussion, this item is laid on the table for approval. Next item.
Oh, sorry, Mr. President, just sent that to, um, traffic and parking.
Uh, laid on the table for approval and referred to traffic and parking.
Item number nineteen is an order submitted by Counselor McLaughlin proposing the reappointment of John Long to the position of City Clerk for a three-year term.
Against my better judgment, I decided to give, uh, uh, City Clerk another three years on this job. Um, I don't know anyone else who's gonna do it, so, uh, you win by default, Mr. Clerk. Counselor Ballantyne would like to comment.
Uh, yes, Mr. President, and I would move to, um, uh, confirm this reappointment now. Um, Mr., Mr. Long, um, has worked certainly with me, um, uh, for the last six years and I think he does an exemplary job, uh, not only supporting our cons, uh, the city councillors, but also supporting our city and running the City Clerk's office. And, uh, I, I think that any discussion we want to have could be had now and does not need to go to committee.
I would agree with that. Any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, Counselor Ballantyne is up. Counselor Rosetti?
Yeah, thank you. As Chair of Confirmation of Appointments, I just, um, I treasure Mr. Long and his guidance and his, um, always being there whenever I think any of us try to reach out to him. I know, uh, whenever I reach out, he apologizes if he doesn't call me back immediately. Um, so I, I too would, I wholeheartedly support this recommendation, but we're setting a precedent by not referring this appointment to confirmation of appointments. This is how we used to do it. This is how I was comfortable doing it. But some of you were not, and I listened to that discussion and agreed. And we have been for a number of years, putting everybody to committee for our interview. So I just want to make that clear, that we are setting a precedent. So I just want to make that clear, that we are setting a precedent by doing this this way this evening. And it's no disrespect to Mr. Long, because if it does go to committee, I'm going to recommend absolute approval. But I just need to make that statement as chair of this committee.
All right, Counselor Scott, you have a comment?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Just speaking in support of the chair of confirmation of appointments, while I expect to give a full-throated endorsement of our current clerk, the hardest-working man in City Hall, I also really want to be protective of both the thoroughness of the process that the city council has adopted in the last two and a half years, and also of the results. You know, changing the process, no matter how fondly we may think of somebody, could potentially open up our action of this council challenge. So I would just encourage the city council to refer this to committee, per usual, allow the committee to engage in this process. And I look forward to congratulating Mr. Long at the conclusion. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, we have Counselor Struzzo, White, and then Ballantyne.
I had a question. Thank you, Mr. President. So can, newbie question here, can you please explain the, what the process would be if we were, I hear what Counselor Rosetti and Counselor Scott are saying. What is, what's the difference between rushing immediately to, what is the time lapse? What is the process of?
Yeah, well, I would say we have two choices. We can approve him right now, or we can refer him to committee. If he gets referred to committee, there's no concern because he keeps the job anyways, even if we rejected his appointment for some reason, he'd keep it until there was a suitable replacement found. So there's no timeline issues at all. So if it's referred to committee, he'd just have to show up to a meeting and be unanimously approved or not approved. So the, it's, I think it's a different process because in the past, we did approve a lot of people without sending them to committee. So I think some councilors are concerned that we're breaking that precedent. Does that answer your question?
Thank you. Thank you for elaborating on that. Yes, I want, Mr. John Long has been an incredible lifeline for me, especially in these first few months, where I, being sworn in in a pandemic and not actually having the luxury of turning to my colleagues if I have a question, John has been there to very much be in support and help in every way he can. So I want a no way to risk losing him and don't want to put his job and risk it anyway. He's with the council.
Yeah, there's no risk unless people decided to vote against him. So that's not a concern.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, we have Counselor White.
Thank you, Mr. President. I understand the concerns expressed by my colleagues, but we aren't breaking a precedent. This is one of the few direct appointments that we have, as opposed to appointments that are submitted to us by the mayor, where it certainly is appropriate to vet them through, even if those were reappointments. But again, this is different. Mr. Long works for us. We appoint him. We have direct knowledge. I do not really know what a committee meeting would accomplish if folks have concerns about the performance of the clerk, and they, I certainly don't, than they could express it this evening. But I really don't see the need, and I, again, don't see it as a breaking of precedent because this is the only one basically that, that we appoint. So those are my thoughts. I'm prepared to vote for Mr. Long this evening.
Counselor Ballantyne.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just echo my counselor-at-large's comments is that Mr. Long's position is different. He reports directly to us. This is not a recommendation from the mayor. So I would still like to keep my motion in to approve this evening.
All right, Counselor Ballantyne moves to approve. Counselor Klingon, you have a comment, and then Counselor Struzzo.
Yes, Mr. President, whoever would have thought that Mr. Long's reappointment would be so controversial in this way? I completely hear and understand where my, the counselor-at-large and the counselor from Ward Two are coming from. And I was leaning in that direction in support of their, their motion, but as Counselor White has, has, you know, made, brought to my attention, brought to my knowledge that this is in fact a different situation, I'd be comfortable going on record of voting in favor of approving him this evening based on that, that information. Otherwise, I totally agree that everybody should be, go through the process.
All right, we have Counselors Struzzo, Davis, and Bah.
Mr. President, since I've spoken, should I reserve my comments for those and yield to my colleagues who haven't yet spoken and then put myself at the back of the line?
If you would like to.
Well, I could just actually, I can do that.
You're on camera right now. Go right ahead.
Okay, I'm quick. I'll be quick. I support Counselor Ballantyne's motion. If it has not been seconded, I'm happy to second it, and I'm happy to vote tonight. Thank you.
All right, Counselor Struzzo seconds. Counselor Davis.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, yeah, this, mostly we've talked about anything so far tonight. I think I felt, I wasn't going to say anything, but it seems like we will take a vote. I want to at least explain the way I'm going to vote, since I think Counselor Rosetti was probably remembering some impassioned soapbox pontificating that I've done over the years about, about process and having the opportunity to actually have these things go through committee. I, you know, also was considered making the point that I think it was Counselor White made, which is this is fundamentally different. So if one were to look for a distinction, I think there is clearly one here. And that would be the reason why, you know, I wouldn't see this as inconsistent with my previously stated views, that we shouldn't, we shouldn't be approving appointments without them going through committee. This is, this is a completely fundamentally different scenario than some of those other ones. Also, we've spoken about this so much and taken up so much of all of our time. I don't think we ought to take any more time in committee on it, so I will, I would support going ahead.
Counselor Bah.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just also, since we might be voting for these tonight, I think most, every of my colleagues have said really profound statements, Counselor Rosetti, Counselor Scott, this is like a thorough vetting process, you know, it needs to follow its course. And after listening to Sage White, you know, yeah, I think, you know, we can always, I mean, you never stop learning. So this is a different, a different appointment. This is not an appointment coming from the mayor. This is directly related to us. We know John. So, yeah, so I'll be supporting Counselor Ballantyne's motion.
Counselor Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, like Counselor Bah, I'm learning all the time. I appreciate the input of my two colleagues who are practicing lawyers and find that helpful. There is still a piece of me that, while in this situation, I don't think any of us have a concern about the work product of Mr. Long. I can foresee a situation in the future where if we were in the habit of approving such appointments by acclamation, that it would perhaps not allow time for one of our colleagues who had a concern to sufficiently investigate or interrogate those concerns. I don't have that concern tonight, and based on the assurances of my colleagues that this is not establishing a dangerous precedent with regard to this council's actions on approving the mayor's appointments, with that under advisement, I'm happy to vote in favor of Clerk Long tonight. But with that continued thought that I'll have to work over a little bit more. Thank you.
Counselor Rosetti.
Mr. President, through you, to the other clerks who serve for us, they're sitting, they have been sitting and waiting in committee for interviews for their reappointments. So if this is the direction we're going to be doing this evening, I apologize to all the other clerks for us, but for not having put yours through in this fashion. And I'll put you all through. I'll recommend your approvals at our next council meeting. You have my word.
Any further discussion? And I have to weigh in very quickly. You know, I do appreciate the level of concern on this. I will say, however, this conversation has lasted far longer than I ever thought it would. And I feel like referring it to committee is just going to have probably even shorter conversation than what we had just now. I don't think this is precedent-setting, and I feel like we are the ones who get to choose whether it's precedent-setting or not, because we can continue to do it like this or not do it like this. And I do appreciate, I hope that people feel they are able to speak up and object on any appointment. But I just can't imagine anybody rejecting this appointment right now, and if anybody wanted to, then they should feel free to do so. So this is also an appointment that I'm putting forward, so I don't want to say, oh, let's refer it to committee when I'm the one suggesting we approve it. So that's all I got to say on that. Any further discussion on motion to approval from Counselor Ballantyne? Here, and no discussion. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll on just this item.
Very good, Mr. President. This is a roll call vote on the reappointment of John Long to position of city clerk. On that item, Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Bah.
Yes, please.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Ballantyne.
Yes.
Counselor Struzzo.
Yes.
Counselor Niedergang. Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Scott. Counselor Ewan Campan.
Yes.
Counselor Rosetti.
Yes.
And Counselor McLaughlin. Mr. President, 11 councils have voted in favor of that motion. None are opposed. That motion has been approved, and a very humbled city clerk. Thanks you very much.
Better watch yourself, John.
I know. All right then. Item number 20 is a communication submitted by City Councilor Rosetti reporting on the August 17, 2020 meeting of the High School Building Committee.
Counselor Rosetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will do my best to be brief. We were updated on the substantial completion date for the educational building itself, and right now that estimated date is early to mid-November. As you know, the education plan thus far by the superintendent is for virtual learning. So if there will be education in buildings, the building hopefully will be ready by mid-November, and then it's up to the superintendent and the school committee if they feel that it's ready with the spacing and COVID necessities needed. The contingency line personally has me a little bit concerned. We do have some money still in it. The actual figures I don't have with me right now. I apologize to you all, but it is up on the website. But we were also reminded, and Mr. Bean, of course, is a member of the committee, that the bonding for this high school project, which I believe Mr. Bean may be bringing to the finance committee in the very near future, because the interest rates are so low right now, there is a potential savings on the anticipated original bonding before the vote to the people. That number is now down $88 million in cost savings based on the current interest rates. Now, you know, nothing has been decided fully yet by the administration. Mr. Bean, I think, will be bringing it to the finance committee. So that conversation did come into play when we looked at our current contingency line and the concern that the chair raised and others about that. Our next scheduled meeting is September 14. It is always open to the public, of course. And lastly, I did want to mention that the city and cable office did do a videotaping with the project manager of the insides of the buildings so that the public can view it and see where it is to date. And that will soon be posted for the public to view. I have not yet been notified of it, so I'm hoping that we all will receive a communication through the city of this video and its ability to see yourself, the beautiful building that's happening inside. Thank you, Mr. President.
On the item, Counselor Ewan Campan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank my, my at-large colleague, as always, for this update. And I also just wanted to weigh in at the administration's listening. Counselor Rosetti said you're still considering whether we should refinance to save somewhere between $60 to $80 million, and in my opinion, we should do that.
May I respond, Mr. President?
Yes, please.
Thank you, through you. Maybe I wasn't clear. So the monies that the people voted to do this project for the high school, of course, it's being spaced out to the actual bonding of such, of the monies that, the responsibility to this tax payers of the city of Somerville. And when, and when Mr. Bean is going to recommend to go out for bonding on that, he did say at the building committee meeting that that would be brought by him with the administration to the finance committee. So I anticipate that Mr. Bean may be moving to do such soon based on the low rates that are in play. And again, he and the chair reminded everybody that if it were to be bonded in full today, that would be a savings of approximately $88 million. So we are at the whim of waiting for Mr. Bean to come before us for that vote.
Any further discussion? Here, and none. This item will be laid on the table and placed on file, and why don't we take all the items laid on the table and do a roll call vote for approval?
Very good, Mr. President. This, then, is a roll call vote on the approval of item numbers 12, 14, 15, 16, 17, and 18, and then placing items 13 and 20 on file. On that motion, Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Bah.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Ballantyne.
Yes.
Counselor Struzzo.
Yes.
Counselor Niedergang.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campan.
Yes.
Counselor Rosetti.
Yes.
And Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. President, all 11 councils have voted in favor of that motion. Those items have been approved or placed on file.
All right, next item.
We move to item number 21, which is an item of unfinished business. Resolution submitted by Counselor Scott, Ballantyne, Klingon, Davis, and Struzzo supporting House Resolution 702, the People's Justice Guarantee.
This item will be laid on the table with no vote taken.
Item 22 is a resolution by Counselor Ballantyne. The mayor, chief of police, director of health and human services discussed with this council at its meeting back in June, their declaration of systemic racism as a public safety and health emergency.
Counselor Ballantyne.
Mr. President, could we refer this to public health and public safety? And I would ask if the chair of that committee could possibly add this to the agenda for Monday night. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Here, and none. This item is laid on the table for approval and referred to public health and safety. And just an update to people, I did ask our legislative aides about this today or yesterday, a couple days ago, and hopefully we will have a response sometime soon. But this item will be referred to public health and safety.
Very good then. Item number 23 is a report of the committee on public health and public safety, which met on August 17, 2020, as committee as a whole.
Counselor Davis.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee did meet as a committee as a whole. The primary purpose of the discussion was to discuss the Tufts reopening plan. The mayor was present for the first portion of the meeting and answered questions. There were also several representatives from Tufts University available to speak and answer questions. The minutes of the The minutes of the meeting that are online are very thorough, and so I would encourage folks to read those if you want the details. The long and short is that there were a number of questions raised, a number of counselors expressed their skepticism as to the effectiveness of the plan, perhaps not the specifics of the plan itself, but the likelihood that aspects that are completely outside of the control of the university would, you know, would be followed. And that's just a concern that there really was no answer for, is no answer for. The other point that was made was that, so as folks hopefully know, Tufts did make some adjustments to the initial plan, that there will be some students that are participating in classes in sort of a hybrid model and some remotely. However, students who are not participating on campus in any way, the question was asked whether they're subject to the testing program and protocol. At the meeting, the Tufts representative said that he would look into that. My understanding, and actually it was a conversation with Counselor Ballantyne today, was that her understanding, or what she's been told, is that such as students who don't, who are completely remote but living in the city will not be subject to the testing. So, you know, I might, at the end of this, I might defer to Counselor Ballantyne to share her conversation on that, because that was a sort of an unanswered question from the meeting. Otherwise, as I said, the minutes are comprehensive, so I would encourage folks to read those, and I would move that the minutes be accepted as a meeting.
All right, Counselor Davis moves to accept the committee report as submitted. On that, Counsel Ballantyne.
Thank you, Mr. President. And just to add on to the good counsel from Ward 6 committee report, I did have a conversation with the university today, and they said that at the beginning of the semester now, students have to select which type of learning they would like to have, if it's a hybrid model, or if it will be complete remote but living in Somerville or in Medford. And they determined that there would be 113 students who will be living in our community and will only be learning online. The university, and I'm not a lawyer here, I'm supposed to get the legal language so I can share that with constituents, but they, the way it was explained to me is the university cannot legally insist that they get tested. So that was the rationale. I will say that all my questions have been answered in the last week, and thank you for the briefing on the committee report.
Counselor Rosetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to Counselor Ballantyne. So then, to my understanding, our Board of Health can take precedent of demands in emergency crisis situation, such as what our community, our state, and our country are dealing with right now. So if it is, if it has been reduced miraculously from 1600 to 1400 to now 100 and some odd, those 100 and some odd, although chose choosing virtual, will still be going on campus, I would assume, to the library, maybe to the cafeteria. I still stand firm of the mindset that every student, whether virtual or not, who is living in our community, should and must be tested. So if the legalities are still unknown, then I want to know immediately through our Health Department what role we play on this. And secondly, I'd like to say that during that meeting of the report of my good colleague from Ward 6, that he just reported out, one of my questions was that could, would it be possible for the staff to do a weekly report and update to us as a council, to keep us informed and updated of discussions with Tufts and numbers of students, et cetera? I said, would that be a problem? I was told it would not be a problem, it could be done, and here it is a week and a half later, heard nothing. So we need to move on this immediately, and if I have to make a motion on the Health Department's view, I will, but I yield to the counselor from Ward 7, who's been addressing this a lot, and the Chair of Public Health and Public Safety. But that's how I feel very strongly still today.
Counsel Ballantyne.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to my colleagues. It is my understanding from my conversation with Mr. Durico, and he is in the audience this evening, so I could sponsor him to speak, but I would say is, my understanding is 1,600 students are learning remotely, but only 113 of those exist in Somerville or Medford combined. If my good colleague at large has a different understanding, I did ask that specific question to Mr. Durico this afternoon, but it is my understanding that all those other students, the 14, nearly 1,500 students are learning remotely, and they are not in Somerville or Medford. They're across the country.
Any further discussion on the committee report? Counselor Rosetti.
I guess, Mr. President, I want to make sure I was clear. That 100 and some odd, I think we still have power and authority over to make sure that they get tested.
I am waiting to hear legally the response on that. I did speak to our city solicitor this afternoon also, and he said something to the effect that they are residents like you and I, and in our city, and the city can't require us to all get tested. They couldn't discriminate against the students. They'd then have to require the entire city population to get tested, something to that effect. Again, I'm not a lawyer, so not qualifying, but that's how I understand it. I certainly think it's worth exploring further, so, and that we have some legal advice on that.
Mr. President, after acceptance of the report, I'd like to move a motion.
Yes, I was going to suggest that, thank you. Any further discussion on the committee report? Here and no further discussion on the committee report? Let's do a roll call vote to approve the committee report.
Mr. President, this is actually a roll call vote on the approval of item numbers 22, which was the resolution by Counselor Ballantyne, which is being moved over to public health and safety, and the public health and safety committee report. On the approval of those two items, Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Ballantyne.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Niedergang.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campan.
Yes.
Counselor Rosetti.
Yes.
And Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. President, 11 councils in favor of that motion, it has been approved.
All right, Counselor Rosetti, you have the floor.
Yes, sir. I move that the Director of Health and Human Services inform this council within the next seven days of the authority, given the state of emergency for public health and safety as it relates to Tufts college students in virtual learning. Thank you.
All right. Do you have that motion, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. President, I, I'm sorry, could I ask that that motion be repeated, please? Thank you.
Yeah, you have the call, Counselor Rosetti.
Okay, I didn't write it down, so I think this is what I just said. I move that the Director of Public, of Health and Human Services, I believe, is that Mr. Kress's title, Mr. President?
Yes.
Okay. I move that the Director of Health and Human Services report to this full council within the next seven days the ability of our Health Department or administration to order testing, COVID testing of all college students, Tufts college students, virtual or hybrid.
You got that, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, I do. I appreciate the clarification, thank you.
Okay, any discussion on the motion? Counselor Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. I believe Director of Health and Human Services is present tonight. It would be useful to hear from the Director.
Okay, Counselor Strezzo has a comment, and if anybody would like to sponsor Director Kress to speak, please let me know.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counselor Scott, did you want to sponsor Director Kress to speak, or?
You go on ahead.
Okay. I'll first, I'll sponsor Director Kress to speak, and now may also make a comment as well.
Yes, let's do the comment first, and then we'll sponsor him to speak.
Okay, reverse it. So, a question actually for Counselor Rosetti. So with your motion, you're asking the Director to explore all students virtually, Tufts students virtually?
If I may respond, Mr. President, through you to Counselor Strezzo, during the discussion of Public Health and Public Safety meeting, when I questioned, were they going to be testing the virtual students, the answer was no. Later on in the meeting, Tufts offered, and it's on tape, that they would in fact test those students.
Right.
So we're hearing, we're hearing now no. So to my understanding, given the state of emergency of public health and public safety that our Commonwealth and country are under right now, our Health Department holds strong reins on decisions such as this.
Through you, Mr. President, through you to Counselor Rosetti. Would you like to specify which virtual students? Because virtual students is a very broad range, and virtual students attending Tufts could be in Colorado or Hawaii, and with a broad motion such as that, it's not really refining that or acknowledging that.
Thank you for that. Mr. Clerk, did my motion not state the students that were residing in Somerville?
Through the Chair, I believe it did. I thought it said of all Tufts college students attending virtually or by hybrid living in Somerville.
Okay, so it's, must have missed that. Yeah, I didn't quite catch it, because it seemed like it was a bit broad and was including entire virtual Tufts students. So that is, so the motion goes to virtually, virtual students specifically residing in Somerville, and how exactly would that be disclosed? How?
If I may answer that, Mr. President?
Please go ahead, and then maybe we can have Director Kress answer these questions.
Thank you, sir. Through you to Counselor Strezzo. By our ordinance, Tufts has to give us a report 45 days after the start of school, but I'm sure our administration and Health Department know those numbers and addresses much sooner than we will get that official report.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, Counselor Rosetti moves to sponsor Director Kress to speak. Any discussion? Seeing none, I see your mic is on, you have the floor, Director Kress.
Good evening, city council members. Thank you for that question. I think I have to look at the motion that was just made, and I believe we'll have, I will have to check with legal to understand some of the nuances that were in that motion. So I don't want to give anybody some misinformation, so I will get back to you in writing within the next seven days as requested in that, in that order, once I consult with the legal team.
All right, any questions?
Mr. President?
Counselor Rosetti.
As maker of the motion, I would encourage Mr. Kress to reach out to me, I'm available, my cell phone 24/7.
All right, any further comment? Here and no further comment. This item will be laid on the table for approval and will refer to public health and safety. Next item.
Next item, Mr. President, is item number 24, which is a request of the mayor requesting approval to pay prior year invoices totaling $47,572.46 using available funds in the Law Department's Legal Services Account for outside legal council services.
Any discussion on the item?
Mr. President, thank you, Mr. President. I see no problem with this motion or the subsequent two motions paying previous year invoices, and would request that they be approved on.
All right, any further discussion? Here and none, let's lay this item on the table for approval. Next item.
Did Counselor Scott waive the reading of 25 and 26, or should I read those?
He did not, but would you like to, Counselor, would you like to waive any readings, Counselor Scott?
Let's go ahead and just read them.
All right, next item.
Very good. Item 25 is a request of the mayor requesting the approval to pay prior year invoice totaling $130 using available funds in the Health and Human Services Professional and Technical Services Account for sign language interpreter services.
On the item. Here and no discussion, this item is laid on the table for approval.
And item 26 is a request of the mayor requesting approval to pay a prior year invoice for $31.75 using available funds in the Inspection Services Department's credit card convenience fee account for online payment processing services.
Any discussion? Here and none, this item is laid on the table for approval.
Item number 28 is a request of the mayor requesting acceptance of a $254,840 grant that requires a match from the Department of Homeland Security to the Fire Department for hazardous materials training.
Any discussion?
Mr. President?
Counselor Scott.
On this item, as it does require a match, I would request that it be referred to Finance Committee.
All right, any further discussion? Here and none, this item is laid on the table, this item will be referred to Finance.
Actually, my apologies, Mr. President. The funds to match this grant have already been appropriated in the budget. I apologize. I had this confusion, and I am content to lay this on the table for approval tonight.
Okay, the item's laid on the table for approval.
And item number 28 is a request of the mayor requesting acceptance of a $3,418 grant with no new match required from the Mass Board Library Commissioners to the library in order to provide virtual programming for distance learning workshops and kits.
Any discussion?
Mr. President, move for approval this evening, thank you.
This item will be laid on the table for approval.
Item 29 is a request of the mayor requesting confirmation of the appointment of Haley Burmel to the Commission for Women.
Unless anyone would like to unanimously approve this, it will be referred to confirmation of appointments. Unless anyone would like to unanimously approve this, it will be referred to confirmation of appointments.
Item number 30 is a request of the mayor requesting confirmation of the appointment of Kerry Conley to the Memorialization Committee.
This item will be referred to confirmation of appointments.
And 31 is a request of the mayor requesting confirmation of the appointment of Sarah Marks to the Memorialization Committee.
This item will be referred to confirmation of appointments. Now let's take the items that were laid on the table, and do a roll call vote on those.
Very good. That is a roll call vote on Councilor Rosetti's late item, and communications, the request of the mayor, numbers 24 through 28. On that motion, Councilor Klingon.
Yes.
Councilor Mbah.
Yes.
Councilor White.
Yes.
Councilor Ballantyne.
Yes.
Councilor Strezzo.
Yes.
Councilor Niedergang.
Yes.
Councilor Davis.
Yes.
Councilor Scott.
Yes.
Councilor Ewan Campen. Rosetti, yes, please?
Yes.
Thank you, Councilor Rosetti?
Yes.
And Council McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. President, all 11 councillors have voted in favor of that motion, those items have been approved.
All right, next item.
We move to item number 32, which is a communication of the police chief responding to a board item about 911 emergency call policies and procedures.
This item will be laid on the table, placed on file, with a copy to Public Health and Safety.
Mr. President?
Council Ewan Campen.
Can that item, can a copy please go to Housing Community Development for the 911-related conversation?
Ah, yes, good point, yes, we'll place it on file, laid on the table, and refer to Housing Community Development.
Thank you.
Very good, item number 33 is an item of new business. It's a new drain layers license submitted, application submitted by JBC Utility.
Mr. President?
Council White?
I moved to waive the readings in 33, 34, and 35, and approved them all, I've been assured by the city clerk that everything is in order.
All right, Council White moves to waive the readings and move for approval, any discussion? Hearing none, we'll lay these items on the table for approval.
Very good, item number 36 is a communication from 11 citizens submitting comments regarding the Tufts plan to reopen its campus in the fall. These comments came in subsequent to the public hearing that was held early this month.
All right, this item will be laid on the table and placed on file.
That brings us, Mr. President, to agenda item number 37, which is an order submitted by Council McGlaughlin, in his capacity as president, recommending the appointment of Councilor Wilfred Mbah to the Memorialization Committee.
Well, this appointment was boring until about 30 minutes ago, so I am recommending Councilor Mbah to the Memorialization Committee. Councilor Rosetti will also be serving on this in her capacity on the High School Building Committee. Would anyone like this to be referred to committee, or is there a motion for approval?
I move to approve, Mr. President.
Mr. President?
Council Scott moves to approve, Council White, did you comment?
Yes, yeah, I would like to sever the question, I think we should send Council Rosetti to committee, and then approve Council Mbah tonight.
Council, Council Scott moves to approve, any discussion? Hearing none, let's do a roll call vote on this and the other items that were laid on the table.
Very good, Mr. President, this is a roll call vote on the approval of items 33, 34, 35, and 37, and placing items 32 and 36 on file. On that motion, Councilor Klingon.
Yes.
Councilor Mbah.
Yes.
Councilor White.
Yes.
Councilor Ballantyne.
Yes.
Councilor Strezzo.
Yes.
Councilor Niedergang.
Yes.
Councilor Davis.
Yes.
Councilor Scott.
Yes.
Councilor Ewan Campen.
Yes.
Councilor Rosetti.
Mr. Clark, I was having technical difficulties, I'd like to put item 36 into license and permits. I, Mr. President, I apologize, I was having technical difficulties, I couldn't get my mic to click on.
Okay, so you want item number 36, the public communication?
Yep.
And where did you want it?
License and permits.
Okay. Can we sever that item, Mr. Clark, and vote on the other items?
Mr. President, that doesn't change the vote, a referral doesn't require a roll call vote, so we can finish the roll call vote as is.
There we go, thank you.
So, Councilor Rosetti?
Yes, thank you.
And Council McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. President, all 11 councils have voted in favor of the motion, so items 33, 34, 35, and 37 are approved, and 32 and 36 are placed on file, and they will be referred to the appropriate committees.
Yes, please refer item 36 to license and the permits.
Got it. Item 38 is a communication submitted by Councilor Scott, Davis, Mbah, and Ewan Campen updating this council on the status of the creation of a police commission and community police review agency.
Council Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President, as the City Council, as was moved by Council Mbah, myself, and then Council Davis, and then co-sponsored by the entire council back in June 18th, the City Council has proposed to create these two bodies, one of which is a civilian police commission that would have the authority to review police department policies, and also to approve, review and approve discipline for officers, amongst other responsibilities, and the creation of an independent review agency, which would be a civilian, or probably department within the city, that would engage in independent investigations of various types of complaints related to the police department. This was moved and sent to committee on June 8th with full sponsorship, the City Council. Over the recess, several of us have been working on this process, continuing to be in conversation with experts around the country. Fortunately, this is not brand-new ground, bodies of this type do exist in other places. It is our hope to create one that is the state of the art and the best in the nation, that then gets used as a model elsewhere. Through the course of that, it has been discussed that in order to make this process something that actually reflects Somerville's needs, we do want to have an extensive public process, but one that's well-managed and that moves along quickly so that we can get to a conclusion of the process in a relevant timeframe, ideally before the end of the year. In, in support of that, part of the discussion has been about the need to hire two positions, one of which would be community outreach position, somebody who yeah, a city council outreach coordinator, an organizer that can help us set up these meetings, make sure that the right people are in the room, the people who are most directly impacted, and also the people who don't necessarily show up to public hearings or other public meetings, so that person would work with community partners, with agencies that directly interface with these populations, and would be kind of our eyes and ears and legs on the ground to get these meetings together. Separately, the need has been identified to hire a city council policy analyst, somebody that can help gather both the information, pull together the information that's already been gathered by a group of councillors who have been working on this project, to generate some of the materials for these meetings, but also to take the input from the residents of Somerville that are going to engage in this process, and help us to draft an ordinance that frankly, we don't necessarily have the bandwidth for. So, that policy analyst position is one that I think is going to be very relevant. There's still ongoing discussion about whether or not these positions are hourly, whether they're full-time, whether they're short-term, whether they're long-term, and I think there are still a lot of open points. The resolution that was approved, or was sent to committee by this council with full cosponsmanship, is fairly detailed, but there are a lot of questions still outstanding, so it's our hope that we will be rolling on this very shortly. I know some of these questions have been already referred to the President, and we're working with the administration, or I know the Chair of Legislative Matters in particular is working with the administration on some logistical issues around hiring those positions. But the work has been underway this summer, we are continuing to push forward, and hopefully we will have this process moving aggressively towards a decisive conclusion prior to the end of this year. Mr. President, I would defer also to my cosponsors on this, particularly Chair of Legislative Matters and my colleagues, both Ward 3 and large, thank you.
Council Davis?
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Council Scott, for that summary. I'll add a few points of detail as it relates to the conversations I've been having with the administration that Council Scott noted. We have provided, and thanks to Council Ewan Campen for doing some of the drafting on this, we've actually provided two drafts or proposed job descriptions. We will value, certainly value input from the Personnel Department, and especially the Legal Department on, you know, as Council Scott said, structure, so that, that is very much well on its way. And the other thing, just to, I just want to reiterate, is, you know, this will be a community effort. We see, you know, these two positions will be specific to this, to this process. Perhaps it'll go so well that down the road, we will look towards perhaps, you know, a inclusion in the budget for long-term positions. But to be clear, right now we're talking about just hiring for this project, that's what we said we'd do, that's what we're focused on, but I think it's safe to anticipate that we certainly would value and need help from mothers in the community, so if folks are willing to, certainly stay tuned for when those job descriptions are released, something that folks might be interested in and feel that they're qualified for. But also, you know, beyond that, just to help, we'll very likely need some volunteers to help get the word out and other things, so I can reach out to myself, to Council Mbah, Council Scott, Council Ewan Campen, the four of us are sort of taking the lead on various aspects of this, so that yeah, so if you want to help out with it, it's something we could do. And the other thing, the last thing I will say, Council Scott mentioned that, you know, we look towards a December finalization, that's my timeframe, you know, or at least, you know, I know that that was something that I put out there. The reason for that is twofold, one, I just want to keep moving on this, doesn't happen, it doesn't happen, there's no magic to that, but also that I want to, I want us to keep, you know, acknowledge that this isn't the big thing. This isn't the significant change, this is one small thing that we need to do for however long, and in whatever way we continue to have an armed police force. It's appropriate to have a civilian reprocess, and as Council Scott said, we want it to be the best in the nation. There are much bigger things, Council Ewan Campen mentioned, the discussions that have been ongoing about reimagining how we respond to issues, so this, you know, this shouldn't swallow up all the community effort and all the time, though it's our intent to do this appropriately with community input, but also to keep moving on it, so that's kind of where we are. Thank you, Mr. President, thank you, Council Scott.
All right, Council Mbah?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President, I'll be brief, I just want to thank my colleagues, you know, they've said a lot. I just want to underscore two important words that they've used consistently, it's going to be a community process. Community process, so, you know, I want to say that anybody that wants to be involved in the process should reach out to either any one of us, you know, I've put a few people already, you know, in touch with Councilor Scott, they have brilliant ideas, and this is what we are looking for, so we want to, if you're a member of the public, you want to be part of this process, please reach out to us, because we want to have a robust process and very consistent with our values. Thank you, Mr. President.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, the item is laid on the table and placed on file. Next item.
Item 39 is an order submitted by Council Ballantyne and Scott that the Chief of Police, the Director of Parking, and the Director of SPCD discuss enforcement to eliminate delivery and other vehicles from parking on the Beacon Street cycle track in order to provide a safe biking route for bicyclists.
Council Ballantyne?
So I am, thank you, Mr. President, I am the council representative on the Bike Committee, and there are continual discussions, certainly in the last year while I've been on it, about parking on protected bike lanes that the city has established, and specifically on Beacon Strick. And it's taken a decade-plus of visioning in order to get this protected bike lane on Beacon Street, and there's been a tremendous amount of frustration from cyclists that delivery trucks are always parking in it, so hence cyclists are no longer safe because they have to go out into the traffic to go around. And I think as the city is moving into keeping our cyclists safe with protected bike lanes that we need to start having the discussion seriously about how to enforce or come up with an enforcement policy, so delivery vehicles and other vehicles are not parking on the, the cycle track. So I put this in, and I would like it referred to traffic and parking, thank you.
Council Strezzo would like to sign on, and Council Scott, do you have a comment?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, I thank my colleague in Ward 7 for bringing this. To be honest with you, the Mountable Curb and the cycle track on Beacon Street is both a kind of a running joke on my Twitter feed and with constituents, and also a point of extreme pain for the people on Beacon Street who have suffered through over a decade of frankly, mismanagement and failure on the Beacon Street project all the way around. I think also, this is an important conversation to have, as it dovetails with the conversations we're having about the roles of policing, and how they're able to adequately address the needs that the city has. So I look forward to this conversation, and I hope that it will be considered in context of the larger conversation we're having about the ability for us to enforce laws that do not lean on a police department that already has other priorities. Thank you.
Council Mbah would like to sign on, and Council Niedergang has a comment?
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Council Ballantyne and Council Scott, for your comments. Not to diminish this at all, because I think Beacon Street is special in some ways, but this is a problem all over the city, you know, it's a problem on Broadway, it's a problem on Cedar Street, postal trucks, delivery vehicles blocking bike lanes. And so far, the city has not figured out a way to enforce it, so I don't want to distract from the concern about Beacon Street, but I intend in traffic and parking to have the broader edition as well, thank you.
Council Ballantyne?
Thank you for that, with that in mind, through you, Mr. President, I'd like to ask my colleague from Ward 5, is there a ready and order that exists in your committee that deals with protected bike lanes? You know, for the broader context, if not, then I'll just type in a late order now, and add it, and ask that it be referred to traffic and parking.
Mr. President?
Yes. Council Niedergang?
Thank you, through you to Council Ballantyne, you know, I should know that, but I've been waiting till other committees were scheduled before scheduling traffic and parking, I haven't looked through the box in a few months, so I can't recall, so I would, I would ask you to please submit that order, it's better to have two than not to have one. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, this item is laid on the table for approval and referred to traffic and parking. Next item, please.
Mr. President, item numbers 40 and 41 have been dealt with already, and item 42 has been withdrawn, so that brings us up to item number 43. has been withdrawn. So that brings us up to item number 43, which is...
Counselor White.
Counselor White.
Thank you. For the folks at home, these are all renewals of the lodging house licenses for Tufts. I'm going to move to waive the readings of them because they're long. So I would move to waive the readings of them, but I assume it's the will of the council that this be referred to committee. And then I guess the question I would have is because of, you know, the nature of it, whether folks would want me to make it as a committee of the whole. So certainly, I wouldn't want to poll, you know, during the meeting, but if folks are interested in making this meeting a committee of the whole, I would ask them just that they email me, because it would be my intention to schedule this for the, you know, the traditional night we have licenses and permits is the Wednesday before the next city council meeting. And at that point, I intend to have the city solicitor there, Doug Kress, and someone from Inspeccional Services, probably Superintendent Antadovica, to address these licenses that are before us, and also to respond to questions that any members of the council might have with respect to these. So pretty much, Mr. President, that's my intention with regard to this. And again, to remind members, if they do want it to be a committee of the whole, just send me an email. Thank you.
All right, Counselor White moves to waive the readings of items number 43 to 79 and refer them to license and permits. Counselor Rosetti has a question, and Counselor Strezzo.
I'll yield my question. Thank you. I'll wait for committee. Thank you, sir.
Counselor Strezzo.
Thank you, Mr. President. What is, can, through you to Counselor White, what is the timeline of the approval of these permits after they get to committee?
I can't speak to when they're going to be approved. I can speak to when I'm going to conduct the next committee meeting, which is again, the Wednesday before the next meeting. And then it's up to the will of the committee, and then subsequently, the will of the council.
Right. This is, okay, right, the timeline of what, when approval or not approval would be. Yeah, I jumped the, so what, two weeks, three weeks?
You know, I've given you my answer as best I can.
Okay, so, so the next, if it was a city of, Mr. President, three, two, you two, Mr. or Counselor White. So that would be the week of September 7th is when you have a meeting scheduled, when you have scheduled the meeting, because I didn't see it on the calendar.
I haven't scheduled it yet because the item wasn't referred to my committee until tonight, so you can't schedule, you know. So that's why I express what my intent is, and assuming it is referred to committee, then I will schedule it again, as I indicated, the Wednesday before the next city council meeting.
Got it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay.
All right, any further discussion? Here are none. These items will all be referred to, laid on the, well, these items will be referred to license and permits, no laying on the table.
Very good. Mr. President, there are just a couple late items right now. We have an order that has been submitted by Counselor Niedergang, Davis, and Ballantyne, that the Director of SBCD update this council on the plans, design, and process for the Holland Street and College Avenue mobility improvements.
On the item.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Pretty self-explanatory. I'd like it to go to traffic and parking, just so we can discuss, get an update and discuss how that project is moving forward in public.
All right, you said traffic and parking?
Please.
All right, seeing enough, Counselor Mbah would like to sign on. Seeing no further discussion. This item is laid on the table for approval and referred to traffic and parking.
Next, Mr. President, is a late item submitted by Counselor Ballantyne, that the President of this council update the council on when its racism training will be and advise what criteria has been used to select a trainer.
On the item? Here are no discussion.
Thank you.
Oh, go ahead, Counselor Ballantyne.
Thank you. So it's just self-explanatory. I think if you could just tell us what, how you anticipate this is going to move forward. Thank you.
Yeah, so just like the previous item we discussed, I just spoke to the city, the legislative aides about this. We're looking into it. We're going to figure out whether we need to put out a request for plan or whether we can just select somebody. So working on it, and hopefully I'll have an update for you all soon.
Thank you.
So this item is laid on the table for approval.
Mr. President, there are no further items before the council this evening unless Counselor Ballantyne has text to submit.
Uh, yes, I, through you, Mr. President, if I may, I did email something. If the clerk hasn't received it, can I just read the text for the late item?
That works for me.
Okay. That the Director of Traffic and Parking and Mobility and the Chief of the Somerville Police Department discuss and present an enforcement plan to change behavior and eliminate delivery vehicles and other vehicles from parking on protected bike lanes throughout the city.
And it's Scott.
And I did send that.
Counselor Davis, sign on. There are no further discussion. This item is laid on the table for approval and referred to traffic and parking. And let's do a roll call vote on all remaining items.
Very good, Mr. President. This will be a roll call vote on the approval of item 39 and the late items that were submitted by Niedergang and two by Ballantyne, and then additionally placing item number 38 on file. So on that motion, Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor White. Counselor Ballantyne.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Niedergang.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campan.
Yes.
Counselor Rosetti.
Yes.
And Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. President, all 11 councilors have voted in favor of that motion. Those items have been approved or placed on file as appropriate.
All right, there's no further items before us.
There are no further items before this council, Mr. President.
And no further items. Counselor Klingon moves to adjourn. I can't remember. I guess we need a roll call vote on adjournments.
Unfortunately, there is, Mr. President.
Please call the roll.
This is a roll call vote on adjournment. Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Ballantyne.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yep.
Counselor Niedergang.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campan.
Yes.
Counselor Rosetti.
Yes.
And Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. President, all 11 councilors have voted in favor of the motion.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, we are adjourned. See you soon.